Please let the record show that Commissioner McCann is absent with an excused absence. The rest of the planning commissioners are present.
Thank you. Moving on to item number one, the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting, July 23rd, 2018. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, with that, would you please vote? And four yeas and one absent, which is a excused absence. Am I correct on that? All right, approval of the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting, July 23rd, 2018. Oh, I just did that?
Yep.
All right. We didn't do it with enough enthusiasm. So, okay. Moving on to B, public comments. Do we have any slips, Madam Secretary? Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment? If so, I will read the paragraph. No one here? Okay. Then we will move on to the consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar. And moving on to item number two, under public hearings, Local Coastal Program Amendment, LCPA 18-0001-Zone Text Amendment, ZTA 18-0001, for a local coastal program amendment and zone text amendment to amend various portions of the zoning ordinance to clarify sections to better assist the public, 2018 zoning ordinance cleanup. The recommendation by staff is that the planning commission adopt the attached draft resolution recommending the city council approve local council, excuse me, coastal program amendment, LCPA 18-001, that's 301, Zone Text Amendment, ZTA 18-001. At this time, I would like to call on Mr. Nicholas. We know that you have all been working very hard on this and it's taken a pretty long time.
Yes, it has, and thank you very much. Chair and planning commissioner, Sean Nicholas, project planner. This is the 2018 version of the zoning ordinance cleanup. As the planning commissioners are aware, we had a public study session on June 25th, 2018, and it was open to the public in which we introduced and discussed all of these various changes. And it's important to note that these code cleanups are important to make sure that we, all our requirements here in the community are accurate, relevant and clear, and compliant with state law. And as the chair correctly said, I would say the more focus of this particular update is relevance and clarity for all of our residents, as well as those who do business here in the city of Dana Point. Following the study session, there were a few minor changes to address discussion that occurred at the public study session. And then based on that and the major discussion points, staff focused in our staff report this evening on landscape requirements, alcoholic beverage manufacturing uses, and the Doheny Village modifications. Though, all of the items, if there are additional questions on any other items, staff is available to address them as well. And again, this will be the new norm, as we discussed at the study session, that we'll be bringing forward yearly reviews and/or updates as to what we're doing associated with keeping the zoning ordinance up to date. So, jumping right into the issues, the first item has to do with landscaping, the first component of which has to do with updating the definitions associated with landscaping, in particular adding a definition that zero scape or drought tolerant landscape design, to clarify the issue, is appropriate and is compatible and compliant with our requirements associated with landscaping, meeting the landscape definition. We've also included a requirement associated with front yard setback landscape coverage, and that's a combination that came out of last year's zoning ordinance update that came from both recommendations from the public and actual discussion by the planning commission at last year's study session. So, staff took all that direction and did a variety of research and developed the requirements in front of you. It's important to note, this does not increase in any way the maximum, or I should say the minimum, landscape coverage. So, we're not requiring more landscaping, we're just requiring some of that landscaping to be located within the front yard setback. So, what does that mean? We provided, and this is the same images that the planning commission is familiar with, that was presented at our study session. But just for review, this is taking a standard, single-family residential lot in our standard, single-family zoning designation, RSF 7, which is, the requirement will, is and will remain 25% of the lot has to be landscaping. So, for a standard 5,000 square foot lot, a minimum of 1,250 square feet of landscaping needs to be located on site. But there's no requirement, as we've noted, that could all be located in the rear with nothing in the front, and that would be totally compliant to the code. Wanting to see some aesthetic and softening of the front yard areas, based on staff's review and internal evaluation, doing a requirement of 35% of the front yard setback seemed appropriate to ensure some of that landscaping be located in the front yard setback. As you can see from the numbers, that total landscape requirement just is reduced from the overall requirement. So, still 1,250 square feet of landscaping is required. 350 square feet, which is 35% of the front yard setback, has to be located in the front yard, and then, which is symbolized by this lighter green portion. And then the rest can be distributed as a property owner wishes or desires. So, the key component is, you know, you can have examples, great examples of this when you think of probably the stereotypical front yard, very lush green yards, and evergreen trees and brown cover. But as you can see by the two pictures on the right, the zero scape, especially with recent water requirements coming down from the state, is becoming ever more popular in coordination with decorative hardscape, which we've also gone through the process and identified and set limitations to, to help people know how much that can also count towards their landscape requirements. It really does add a nice design and aesthetic feel, utilizing and consistent with the state requirements and limitations on irrigation, and hopes to avoid situations like this bottom left that may or may not be my front yard, in terms of having problems or what people might perceive as being not aesthetically pleasing. So, secondly, the next item has to do with alcohol beverage manufacturing. This is a new business or industry that's on the rise, especially in Orange County. And we have received several calls regarding individuals who are interested in potentially, in potentially opening up these types of facilities within our community. And so, staff has looked at other communities which have successfully regulated, while also promoting and allowing these businesses to move into the communities and have tailored those requirements to something that we felt was appropriate to Dana Point. There was a method or madness in terms of where we felt it would be appropriate for these uses to be located. We've identified through the approval of a minor conditional use permit that they can be located in all of our commercial districts. And, subject to all of these requirements, can be located also in our industrial business district by right, but again, still subject to these provisions. At this time, we have not allowed it in our mixed use, the CR zoning district, because the thought process there is, is that the manufacturing and certain components that might come with the production of beer, distilleries, wines, might not be, lend themselves to a good neighbor at times with residential. So, we felt to have a little bit more separation between those types of uses would be appropriate, just not allowing them on the same lot together. Additionally, another minor modification that was done in respect to some comments that we did receive at the public study session had to do with the parking requirements. We maintain the alcohol manufacturing area at one space per 400, consistent with the zoning ordinance, current requirements associated with manufacturing, but associated with the tasting room, tap room, outdoor patio, with or without a kitchen, it doesn't matter, that the applicable, other existing provisions of the zoning ordinance would apply, whether it's within a multi-tenant retail facility or whether it's in a standalone facility. We allow staff to evaluate what is the appropriate parking standard that should apply based on what they're proposing. And provides flexibility, ensures that there's enough sufficient parking provided for what they have planned. And we felt this was a good balance to address both of those and be consistent with existing zoning code requirements. Lastly, as discussed in March of this year, city council did recommend, or direct staff, to bring forward as a component of this 2018 zoning code amendment, zoning ordinance cleanup, a number of items to provide some flexibility in Doheny Village to promote some additional opportunities for reinvestment for property owners and business owners in the area. And as you can see here, we made it very clear in which the area that this would apply to. Associated with, I think it's important to highlight with these requirements, that anything new that they would be providing would have to meet current zoning and building code requirements. It's also important to highlight that nothing, again, associated with the floodplain ordinance is being amended, so they would have to be compliant with all the limitations associated with buildings and uses within the floodplain. What this is really doing a lot of ways is reducing the, increasing, I should say, the percentage of linear walls that a non-conforming structure or even a non-conform, or even a structure with a non-conforming use could potentially demolish without bringing it into conformance. Our standard for everywhere else in the community was 50%. We're proposing here, they would be allowed 75%. Again, just allowing a little bit more flexibility to be able to promote reinvestment in those areas, and also removes the 10% one-time addition. So, it allows for more opportunities, again, as long as what they're proposing is consistent with the zoning and building codes requirements. So, staff looked at this and evaluated and identified a large portion and a large chunk of the Doheny Village where this would, is very much apt and would be appropriate right off the get-go if approved by city council. And a number of property owners and business owners have expressed interest in utilizing this, in terms of updating and improving their lots. And so, we feel that these are appropriate measures to promote, per city council's direction. Additionally, consistent with the timing that we foresee with, as coastal commission approving these, we have approximately set up a five-year sunset clause for these approvals, obviously, while the rest of the Doheny Village provisions are worked upon with staff and the Doheny Village merchant associations and other interested parties. And if necessary, they can always be extended if appropriate. Before I go to my conclusion, and I believe the recording secretary has a memo to hand out, talking, and working with the city attorney, staff does have a slight modification that is being handed out to you, and it has to do with the substantial compliance portion of the proposed resolution in front of you. Staff is just modifying a little bit of the language, which is highlighted in blue. It's just providing for better reporting out whether or not an item or an issue in terms of substantial conformance is approved or potentially denied by the director of community development. It's just whatever that determination is, will be reported out, no matter what, to planning commission. And then also just makes it clear that the appeal period for that, should someone want to appeal that determination by the director of community development, would begin 15 days following the planning commission report out. And then it just removes the, about the full membership, and this has to do with that, the removal of section two has to do with the item of due process that the city attorney was particularly concerned about, and just making sure that meetings were noticed appropriately and accurately. So, should planning commission decide to move forward with the attached resolution this evening, it would, staff's recommendation would be to include, just by reference in your motion, of this revised language associated with substantial compliance with discretionary approval. And with that, again, as I've stated, the goal of these modifications are to better assist the residents and applicants, to better understand and utilize our zoning ordinance here in the city of Dana Point. And staff does recommend the planning commission adopt the draft resolution with the modified language provided to you this evening, and recommend approval to the city council. This proves staff's presentation, we are prepared to address any questions the commissioners may have this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Do the commissioners have any questions? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson.
Oh, sorry. I thought you gave me.
I gave you the look, but I didn't give you the words.
My apologies. Couple quick questions. One is on this memo that we have here in front of us. Is the purpose of reporting out, so it puts a finite timeframe on an appeal? Why are we reporting out in the first place?
The whole point of the reporting out is to make it publicly known when there's a substantial conformance, so that way it's out there in the public. It's just an opportunity to make it more, just when we make a decision on discretionary projects such as this, just to give an opportunity. If there is public questions or whatnot, it just puts it in more public forum that the decision was made.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, the idea of substantial conformance is tied to a previous discretionary approval?
Yes, sir.
That has a minor change. Applicant goes into city hall and says, "Look, I don't think this is substantial." Staff agrees, and it's really that transparency element, and I think is that what you're saying?
Exactly, sir.
So, they can't change something without everybody knowing they changed it. Now, if, I see the second piece is, if we disagree with that, is there anything worse we can do, or is it basically, we can, as a resident, file an appeal?
That would be it, sir.
Okay. All right, perfect. And then the second one is on the parking. So, on the, so I guess it's a question, comment, I'd like to get your thoughts, or maybe I miss the way these are set up. So, when you were talking about the parking for the alcohol manufacturing, and you break out the different types of uses within that building, so they face here parking the industrial component one way, the brewery the other way, so they have multiple land uses contained in one structure, parked per land use. Do we have that in our current code? So, for instance, the yoga use. You know, the yoga studios I've been to, they have a small retail piece, they have, in some cases, locker rooms or dressing rooms, and not all their floor spaces can be used for yoga, but we have a gross square foot calculation?
So, what we are proposing this evening is no. There is no provisions right now in the zoning ordinance parking section regarding particularly alcohol manufacturing. So, that's why we're, based on alphabetical order, it's being, replacing the old 48, creating 48A and B, dictating the gross, the square footage based on gross floor area, and then renumbering following. And we felt, in terms of the yoga studio example, we felt that it's similar to gyms, spas and health clubs, but yoga studios are becoming such a prominent request of planning, we felt it would be good to have that just definitively in the code to reflect it, and we felt that it was most consistent, and we have been, already as a policy, been parking it at that requirement. So, we were just clarifying it to make it clear what is required of those wanting to open a yoga studio in the community.
Yeah, no, I don't. Not questioning the number itself?
Yeah.
For the yoga portion?
Okay.
But when I looked at the, unless I, maybe I missed what you just said, if I, so let me just understand. On the brewery, if they have an industrial building, and they're gonna open up a microbrewery with a tasting room, there's different parking requirements for the different uses in that building.
Yes, sir.
So, if I own a yoga studio, I don't have that same, under what we're approving tonight, we're adding another requirement, and we're not, but we're not providing the same, I don't want to call it leniency, but the ability to have an adaptive parking code instead of a one-size-fits-all.
It is, you are correct.
So, just a thought or question, comment, I don't want to design our code. I just, if we're gonna make one section, let you, you know, do something special, because I would call it special if that land use can take advantage of an opportunity like that, which I think everybody should be able to do, that we maybe want to think about adding that to our entire code. And it shouldn't be, you can just do this, it should have to meet certain tests and requirements, but again, that's kind of my thoughts and comments.
Thank you, sir. I'm making notes.
And maybe we have that in there somewhere, and just worded differently, I don't know.
Right.
Thank you.
Any more comments?
I'd like to thank the staff for defining de novo and exerscape. I decided I didn't have to do exercise, it was just tolerant, drought tolerant plants, thank you.
You're very welcome, sir.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, great. Commissioner? Oh, no comments, okay. Any questions? Of staff? All right. Since the recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the attached draft resolution recommending the city council approve local coastal program amendment, LCPA 18-001-Zone Text Amendment, as we've read, ZTA 18-0001.
We need to open the public hearing and ask if there's any requests to speak on this item before we vote.
Oh, I thought I, okay. I thought we decided there wasn't one, anyone here. Okay. Public comments. Do we have any slips?
I have not received any speaker slips.
Are you here, sir, for a public comment?
I have to make a comment, just to listen to comments.
Oh, thank you. All right, hearing none. And no more questions of staff? Right. I guess we...
So, we'll let the record reflect that the public hearing is now closed.
Oh, yes.
You guys can vote or discuss.
Yes. All right, please place your votes.
We need a motion. I'll start with a motion that we approve the changes to the, or we can delete the whole thing. That we approve local coastal program amendment, LCPA 18-0001, Zone Text Amendment, ZTA 18-0001, for a local coastal program amendment, and Zone Text Amendment to amend various portions of the zoning ordinance to clarify sections to better assist the public in the 2018 zoning ordinance cleanup, with the only, with a comment from the commission that the staff and, or the city council investigate this more fluid, or not fluid, but my concern is that we're enacting more requirements with less flexibility. And I would recommend that we look into that as a city, but I don't think we're in a spot, as the commission, to not approve this and move things forward. But I'd like at least some direction from the city council relative to additional changes in the future.
So, you are not suggesting changing the wording today, tonight?
Just a recommendation that they...
To take under consideration.
Yeah, I mean, I think you guys can report what you heard, and that would be my motion.
And just for clarification purposes, that's including the revised language handed out to the day of this evening?
No, with, oh yeah, so I'm fine with that. I think it's absolutely appropriate.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Vice Chair?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add to the amendment, the revised language, but Sean picked it up.
All right.
So, second is a motion.
Right. And we shall vote. And again, we have a yea of four, and we are, we have a commissioner missing. Not with us. Okay. That went faster than I thought. All right, moving on to item number three. This is the sign program permit, SPP 18-0001, for the single tenant service station located at 34131, Doheny Park Road, quotation 76 Service Station. There is a recommendation that the planning commission adopt the attached draft resolution, approve sign.
Sorry, ma'am, I need to type that.
Oh, okay. Where are the milkshakes? Okay. Sign program, the planning commission, the recommendation is that, from staff, that the planning commission adopt the attached draft resolution approving sign program permit, SPP 18-001, for the commercial building located at 34131, Doheny Park Road, 76 Service Station. The owner is Northwest Diller Co. Holdings. The applicant's agent is Promotion Plus Sign Company, Inc. Is there someone from? Anyone?
The applicant is not present now.
Oh, all right, he's not present, very good. All right, then perhaps we can move forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Good evening, Chair and fellow commissioners. Tonight's topic covers the establishment of a sign program for the existing commercial building at the 76 Service Station. Project location, the subject property is located at the corner of Doheny Park Road and Victoria Boulevard in the city's community commercial vehicular district, also known in the general vicinity as Doheny Village. Some photographs of the existing elevations of the building on site. The proposed sign program will complete an overall update of branding to Service Station 76. The current renderings represent the proposed signage at the... The current renderings represent the proposed signage at the corner landscaped island at Doheny Park Road and Victoria Boulevard. This is actually going to be a combination sign, which we haven't seen recently in any sign updates that have come forward to the commission, but it is allowed per the code pursuant to section 9.37 for the service stations. They will be combining the fuel price information and the freestanding tenant identification sign. The proposed sign is to utilize the existing structural base and cabinet, but will reface the sign with updated corporate branding and LED fuel price information. Particularly right now, this is changeable copy on site, so truly the main difference is going to be just the aesthetic coloring and then the LED electronic changeable numbers. The fuel pump signage, the slide shows the existing and proposed fuel pump signage rebranding pursuant to section 9.37150 F4B. The signs encompassed within a fuel pump or required by state or federal government shall not be regulated by this code. So, this is just for reference on this slide, that they will just be doing the corporate rebranding to the pumps themselves. There are currently four fuel pumps on site, and no proposed changes to location or orientation of the existing pumps. The adjacent U-shaped bollards for each fuel pump area will be painted the corporate specifications for the orange color that is their new corporate branding. The canopy fascia signage, the image of the rendering shows the fuel pump canopy on site. The sign program proposes to update the existing fuel pump canopy and new, with new corporate branding. No structural modifications are proposed for the fuel pump canopy, but the addition of an LED lighting along what is referred to as the valance at the top of the canopy is proposed to provide an exterior illumination of the corporate branding along the canopy. This slide shows you the example of a proposed improvement to the canopy, which is at one of the existing 76 service stations here in California that the applicant has actually recently completed. Something to note, though, this is actually an internal cabinet sign that they have on the corner. The aesthetic component will be present, but that is not an allowed illumination for that type of signage along a canopy, so it will not be illuminated internally. The existing wall signage is to be removed. This is existing non-conforming wall-mounted, internally illuminated cabinet signage. As a part of the proposed sign program, the non-conforming signs will be fully removed, and exterior finishes will be returned.
and exterior finishes will be returned to the prior conditions before installation. Additional site improvements, uh, the slide shows the additional site improvements to be made to the existing seventy-six service station. Presently, the site only has one hundred and ninety square feet of existing landscaping as a part of the overall improvements. The station owner proposes to add, uh, two thousand one hundred and thirty-two square feet of landscaping for a total of two thousand three hundred and twenty-two square feet, or fifteen percent, which is the minimum landscape requirement. The proposed landscaping will be provided along the public right-of-way to create a landscape buffer between the service station and the right-of-way. The proposed plant materials are to be drought tolerant and consistent with other recently installed landscaping along the Doheny Park Road area. Also, four parking stalls will be striped in order to meet the minimum onsite parking requirements pursuant to section nine-point-three-five-point-zero-eight-zero. In conclusion, staff finds that the proposed sign program would provide a visually attractive and consistent signage theme to the site. Additionally, all signage meets the area limitations of the section, um, nine-point-three-seven of the Dana Point zoning code. Signage would constitute an enhancement to the overall site. Staff accordingly supports the proposed sign program and recommends approval of SPP eighteen dash zero-zero-zero-one. Staff is present to respond to any questions of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, do we have questions by the commissioners? Yes.
A couple of questions. One, the, uh, in the proposal, it said they're gonna repaint the inside windows to match the exterior. Does that include the closed lube door with the, right now there's glass at the, uh, at the upper level where you can see the storage inside the station?
Yes. So that is one of the reasons why staff did make that particular, um, requirement in order to create somewhat of an overall, um, enhancement, uh, visually, so that you're not kind of seen into internal ducting or storage, um, since the current, uh, setup of the exterior and the inside don't really match up, um, in order to kind of create a little bit more of a cohesive, um, architectural feel.
And the current landscaping, uh, they have star pines, which are like twelve feet tall at the end of the, uh, that makes very little, uh, improvement to the site. Is there a landscape plan for what that's, because the picture showed palm trees at the end were very nice, but that's not where it exists.
Uh, so that is something that they did use, um, I believe, an older image from when there used to be some palm trees out on the Doheny Park Road area. Uh, there will not be a formal application for a landscape plan, because I did provide the applicant with a specific list of drought tolerant plants that will not need, um, irrigation, so then they do not have to come in with a formal submittal to the planning division.
And the lighting is gonna be improved, is it, with the outside lighting in the back? Because right now that's not lit at all.
There is not any proposed lighting, um, for the rear of the property as of right now.
And is the current property, uh, non-compliant with all the signage they have now?
Uh, it's legal non-conforming, so for example, the two cabinet signs that are wall-mounted, those were lawfully established with a permit, um, during the county era, uh, previously, but they would be coming down as a part of the overall improvement with signage.
What about the sale of natural gas, the, in the storage behind the station?
That would be something that's not regulated by the code. There are certain nuances of signage that we do not have to regulate per assigned program.
And the applicant is the, is he the owner or operator?
Uh, no, the applicant is actually the sign company. So generally, we always have the sign fabricators or designers be the applicants, because there is a lot of go-between.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any further? Commissioner?
So, quick question, so just so I'm, I'm clear, we are not approving a landscape plan, that's, the notes and all that, tonight were just information. We're looking at the sign, they wanna change things, so part of the request, or the requirement to change the signage is to bring all the signage into require, into code?
Correct, yes.
But the rest of the stuff that they're doing is irrelevant, is not really attached other than they've said they're gonna do it. As a commission, we're only approving signage?
Correct, yes, it's just a part of a comprehensive upgrade, um, to bring the site into compliance, since they currently do not have things like the parking or the landscaping.
Gotcha, but that's not tied to what we're doing, is it?
No, you're approving the signage.
Okay. And then, I th- I'm pretty sure I read it that, this way, but they're reducing overall sign area on site, aren't they?
With the way that it's calculated per our code today, yes.
They would, okay, got it, okay, perfect, thank you.
Any more questions from the commissioners? All right, then we'll open this to public hearing. Um, Madam Secretary, do we have anyone here to speak?
No, Chair.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing and, uh, go on to discussion with the commissioners.
Uh, the way the si- the station is currently operated is really not an enhancement to that, to that, uh, Doheny Village area. It's, uh, the glass is dirty, the place is not well landscaped, it's, uh, so I would, I would, uh, not support this without some commitment from the ownership to make some improvements in the operation.
All right. Any more?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I certainly recognize, uh, Commissioner Donor's concerns with the operation. I've driven by there, and it's a place I question whether I'd get gas. But at the same time, I think our role here is to look at app, planning applications and deem whether they're complete or incomplete, and, I mean, I have a lot of challenges with a lot of operators, and, um, a lot of things might not get done if I got, that got in the way. So because this sign, this, the proposed signage meets, uh, our code, it's an improvement to what's out there, uh, regardless of the other things that are occurring, um, it gives us one more opportunity to, uh, communicate back to the, to the, um, operator that, um, you know, we have an expectation of high quality in town and hope that they heard this. Um, at least that's what I'm hearing from Commissioner Donor. Um, but because of the fact that it meets the code, I, what I don't wanna do is become a, an enforcement agency of, you know, people that don't wash their windows and, you know, I think their business will suffer as a result of poor operations, and that'll take care of itself over a period of time. And so for those reasons, I would support this, and I would make a motion that we move it forward. Uh, so a motion that we approve sign program, unless you wanted to have discussion, 'cause I'm open to even conditions, uh, but I don't wanna not approve a project because of some of the issues that you raised.
Yeah, I guess the, the issues were, were twofold. One is the proposed, consistent with the plan, it is. Number two, is the project compatible and an enhancement to the site and surrounding neighborhood? Uh, you know, I, like, that's my question, is putting a different color on, it does not make it a better, um, representative, it's not an enhancement to the property, uh, as far as, I mean, to the city. Uh, I look at that and say it's, uh, from, from a red to, to orange, but the, the way it looks is if they don't improve the landscaping, if they don't improve the rest of it, then it's not an enhancement to the community.
All right. Commissioner, open?
But then going back to what Commissioner Nelson said, the, the approval of the project is just signage. There are other things that they're doing there, but all that we're really doing tonight is signage, so I would support it based on that and not alone.
Um, make a motion that, uh, we approve sign program permit SPP eighteen dash zero-zero-zero-one for the si- single tenant service station located at thirty-four-one-three-one Doheny Park Road, seventy-six service station.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Please vote. We have three in favor and one nay, and we have an absent, so it, the measure passes. Okay. Uh, well, that went rather quickly. Going to comments. There are... Going to old business, there is no old business. Oh, we just, we've done that. Uh, we will move on to staff reports.
Good evening, I'll just be really brief. Um, last Friday, the coastal commission considered the Wave Hotel on appeal, and it was approved seven to three. Um, Sean Nicholas is actually the project planner and was speaking to the applicant team today, and they seem eager to move ahead, and I expect we'll see some plans submitted to the city for the construction phase shortly. Um, and then I also wanted to let you know that we don't have any items scheduled for the second meeting in August, that'll be our summer break, uh, but we'll see you in September. That's all I had.
All right, thank you. Commissioner comments?
I just have wanted to add that, uh, we had a special guest at the coastal commission, which was the old city manager who contested this commission's decision, which I found very fascinating. Uh, but I watched the whole hearing and think rec- it really reflects on how well staff and this commission and our city council, uh, moved that project through the system, so nice job. It's gonna be a great asset to the city.
Good.
Ditto.
How do you spell that?
No comments today.
Uh, just ditto on the CCC and I, that, they finally did something very wonderful. We, we don't have to wait now, like, any later, any longer, so, uh, anything else before we adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.